I call to order the Rosemont Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, September 23rd. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
Madam Chair, there are no additions to the agenda this evening.
Thank you. Is there any input from the audience on items that are not on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we'll move forward to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda this evening contains the minutes of our August 26th, 2025 regular meeting. Are there any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Kinniger, seconded by Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We don't have a...
No.
No, okay. Got it.
Well, we have a video of the...
We have a video that you'll do minutes on. Got it. That just caught me off guard for a second. Sorry. We have no old business, so we will move on to our public hearing section. And our first item on our public hearing section this evening is a request by Aspen Fields LLC for a site plan review to develop a childcare facility. And I will turn it over to Julia.
All right. I'd have to hit the... Just give me one second.
There we go.
There we go. Perfect. All right, so a little bit of a summary of the project in front of the Planning Commission tonight. So the Planning Commission is being asked to review the site plan submitted by Aspen Fields LLC to construct a 13,550 square foot childcare facility with a 10,741 square foot outdoor play area. So the subject property is located within the recently approved Aspen Fields Development Area, which I'll kind of go over and overview in the next couple of slides. But daycare centers with more than 16 persons are permitted use within the B1 general business zoning district, which this property is located within that zoning district. So a little overview of the site location. So you can see it's outlined in red on the aerial image right there. So it's north of County State Aid Highway 42, and then east of Aspen Avenue, and also south of Connaughtmere Trail. So you can see that the Aspen Fields area encompasses a total of about 10 acres, which includes the old City Hall site and as well as an old residential house you can see located south of that outlined area. So the land was re-guided with the Aspen Fields Development Area. It was re-guided from public institutional to community commercial and high-density residential, and then subsequently rezoned from public institutional to B1 and R4. So you can see this western portion and also the southern portion that runs east to west is zoned B1, general business, and then the northeastern portion is that high-density residential area. So a little overview of the site standards. So the proposed childcare facility will be located in the southeastern portion of the subject site with the outdoor play area located directly west and south of the building, which you can see on this site plan on the right-hand side of the slide. The main access into the site is shown to come off Aspen Avenue and the northwestern portion of the site with that parking lot area shown directly south of that access drive area. There are a couple constraints on this site, which include two well easement area located in the western portion of the site, and then also a northern natural gas pipeline easement, which runs from the northwestern portion to the southeastern portion of the site in this northern area. So a little overview of the setbacks. So the table below does show the required setbacks in comparison with those provided on the site plan. So all the building and parking setbacks meet the ordinance requirements. So you can see that the building is about 102 feet from the western portion, as we see that the front yard is coming from Aspen Avenue, which is located on the western portion of the site. And then also parking does meet that requirement, and as well as a side yard setbacks meet building and parking, and then also the rear yard also meets that standard as well. The maximum lot coverage for the site is 75%, and on the site plan it did show that there is about 21% of lot coverage on there, so that does meet that minimum requirement as well. So access and parking. There is one access into the site, which I had mentioned. It's in the northwestern end of the site, off of Aspen Avenue. Like I had mentioned as well, the pipeline easement that runs in the northwest to the southeast on the northern portion of the site is a constraint. The applicant has been in contact, though, with the owner of that easement, and they are allowing this applicant to construct parking surfaces over that area, so that's why you see that parking area in the northern portion of the site. And then overview of the parking stalls provided. So required are 47 stalls on site, and they are providing 48 stalls. So you can kind of see that parking calculation breakdown. You can see that one stall per five children, which there's 174 children proposed throughout the building, which would be 35 stalls. And then one stall per room, which there are 11 rooms throughout the building, which would be required 11 stalls. And then they would need an additional stall for their van that they will be having on site, so a total required is 47 stalls, and they will be providing 48 stalls. So they do meet that minimum requirement. A little overview of the exterior materials. So the building elevations show a mix of materials such as natural stone and wood siding. The north and south-facing sides show a mixture of the colored stone with some accents of wood siding. The west and east-facing sides have a similar look, but there are higher elevated peaks on those ends, which have more wood siding than natural stone. The elevation showed to meet the B1 zoning district standards of at least 50% of exterior must either be natural stone or brick. No ephesus shown on the elevations. And then also the building height is under that 35-foot maximum allowed within that zoning district. Here are a couple photos of the proposed elevations. You can see the Crystal's Cuddle Bugs childcare preschool signage. That will be the entrance into the building. And then you can see those higher peaks, which will have more of the wood siding accents, and then also more of that natural wood throughout the different sides of the exterior building. And then here's kind of a layout of the proposed building, so you can kind of see there are 11 rooms proposed throughout the building, and as well as that outdoor play area located west of the building and also south of the building. And then here's a little more architectural site plan review as well. You can see those well easements on the western side of the site do have those constraints. They did change around some of their fencing to make sure that they were not located within those well easement areas. That's why they did end up decreasing some of that fencing area. But you can kind of see access is off the Aspen Avenue and then the main building in the southeastern end of the site. A little overview of landscaping. So the landscape plan submitted by the applicant includes a total of 40 trees on the site, which meets the minimum requirement. Tree preservation plan was also submitted with the landscape plan, which showed the breakdown of caliper inches removed and remaining. And you can see that the site trees required one per 3,000 square feet need to be provided as 35 trees, which they are providing. And then parking lot trees, they would need an additional five trees, which they are providing to equal that 40 trees total. The plan also does show a total of 52 foundation planties located throughout the site, which means that minimum requirement, which you can see is broken down in that table as well. And then landscaping will be located throughout the site, which you can see on that site plan located in the left-hand side of the slide. It will be surrounded by the parking area outside the fencing area, and as well as along the northern portion adjacent to that stormwater ponding located north of the site. Little overview of the site lighting. So the site lighting is shown to be consistent of pole-mounted lights and as well as wall-mounted lights. There are two pole-mounted lights shown to be placed on the islands in the parking lot area, and there will be 15 wall-mounted lights located around the perimeter of the building. The applicant will need to verify, though, that the pole-mounted lights are at least 100 feet from the residential property boundaries, which it does... They are adjacent, so the northern property is technically residential, and the eastern property from the site is also residential. So they'll need to verify that that is at least 100 feet, because if they are not 100 feet, they will need to shorten the pole-mounted lights to 20 feet. The applicant did submit also a photometric study, and it shows that the lumen levels throughout the site do meet the minimum requirement established by the zoning ordinance. So recommendation from the commission today. So a motion to approve a site plan review allowing Aspen Fields LLC to construct a childcare facility subject to conditions A through G, which is shown below the motion on the slide. But I can answer any questions that the commission may have moving forward.
Thanks, Julia. Can you go back to the setback table?
Yes.
I know you had made some updates to it. It just looked different than I... So did we shift the...
Yeah, so...
In the table that we had, we had north being 30 feet.
Yeah, so that was a mistake on my end. I unfortunately made a mistake in that table. So we are seeing... Here's kind of the site plan. We are seeing Aspen Avenue, which is west, as the front, since that is the main road accessing into the site. So the front yard will be the western portion.
Okay, so even though the entrance to the building is on the north side?
Yep, the main entrance from... Because that's the only access road into the site, we see Aspen Fields as the front.
Okay.
Since the road is to the west.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
There are questions from the commission?
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Julia.
This item is a public hearing item, so at this time we will open up the public hearing. Anyone in the audience would like to speak on this item may do so at this time, coming to the podium, stating your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Kinniger, seconded by Commissioner Reed to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Public hearing is now closed. There are no further questions on this item. We could entertain a motion.
Well, I'll just reflect on it. I mean, it's...
Yeah.
Crystal's Cuddle Bugs, I know, is the applicant, and it's great to see this growing business. They've been around for a while, and they keep on growing, and I'm really excited for them.
And a local business.
Yeah.
It's fun to see a local, local-owned business.
So I'll make a motion. A motion to approve a site plan review allowing Aspen Fields LLC to construct a childcare facility subject to the below conditions A through G.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Bednar. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This item was a site plan review, which is in the purview of the Planning Commission. It will not go forward to City Council. Our decision on this item this evening is final. There is a 10-day appeal period. If anyone wishes to appeal, they may do so contacting city staff. Moving on this evening, our next item on our public hearing agenda this evening is a request by Fratelloni Companies for the transfer and renewal of the Vestera Stone X Small-Scale Mineral Extraction Permit. Anthony, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is similar to a review that the Planning Commission makes of various sites throughout the city around this time of year, going into the end of the year. The difference in this case is that the operator of the mine will be shifting to Fratelloni Companies from the Vestera Stone X Cooperative that had been leasing space to Bolander, Fratelloni, and Solberg. So this aerial here shows the mining area. The overall lease area is about 139 acres, but that also includes this former area here that has been reclaimed by Vestera prior to it being turned over and leased to Fratelloni. The actual mining area itself is approximately 96 acres. The site is guided in the city's comprehensive plan for light industrial uses. Its current zoning is A2 agriculture. Just a little bit closer in here, so you can see the mine as it stood on May 3rd. Access into the site is made from Bonner Path. It comes down and then exits the site to the east on that private drive. It's a former driveway for that farmstead there. Mining in the area will occur in sections A1 and B1 in the northwest, and then in A2 and proceeding south into B2. Once mining these areas are mined, it will then start moving westward until mining is complete on the site. The applicant's provided a reclamation plan for once the mineral extraction operation is complete and all materials are removed. It's very similar to the reclamation plan that was approved for the previous operator. Just note that because the lease is being turned over on November 1st, the current operator, Vestera Stone X, is in the process of reclaiming the mining area here, just to get that all buttoned up before turning it over to Fratelloni Companies. The applicant did provide a detailed narrative containing information related to site preparation and operations, hours of operation, dust control, best management practices, and noise mitigation. That narrative depicts operations and standards that are in conformance with the conditions of the draft 2026 permit that was attached to the packet for the Planning Commission. So therefore, staff is recommending approval of this transfer and renewal of the mineral extraction permit to Fratelloni Companies Incorporated. You can take any questions from the commission. Also, the applicant is here who can speak to the operation as well.
Thank you, Anthony. Just to confirm everything, this is a renewal, but with the one change of the ownership, right?
Right, right.
The hours of operation, all of that is... I mean, while you've got it outlined in the permit, it's staying the same as what it was before?
Yes, yes. So the only changes to the permit were updating the names and the dates for the new term of the permit. The land itself is owned by Flint Hills Resources, and it has been leased to Vestera Stone X since about 2004 or '05. At the expiration of their lease, Flint Hills Resources wanted to get to a point where it was just one operator mining the site rather than the consortium of three different operators, and that is where Fratelloni Companies stepped in because they would be doing their mining. There may be some material removed from the site for Flint Hills' own needs that would be removed by Solberg, but they would not be the operator who'd be kind of just doing the ongoing mining.
Thank you. Are there other questions from the commission?
Just a couple. And Fratelloni, they operate the other area right around there, too, right?
Commissioner Reed, that is correct. There is a mineral extraction operation near Emery Avenue in the eastern portion of the city that they do. And then they had been mining also the southern part under the Vestera Stone X.
Right, right. So we've seen them before.
Yep.
The only question I have is on the reclamation that Vestera needs to do, and I can't remember the process. Once reclamation's done, measurements, you know, ground density, that sort of thing, is that something that Vestera needs to do with the city before turning it over to Fratelloni? Or how does that work?
When it's complete, they'll let us know. We'll go out and we'll do our review of the reclamation. Biggest thing is that the grades are correct and that the top soil is the depth that's required by the code.
And all happens before the turnover.
Right, and that's the whole goal, was to have that wrapped up before Fratelloni came in.
And then last, was there any... I mean, we generally ask with mining operations, any neighbor complaints or anything like that that have come up or materialized?
Yeah, so staff has not been made aware of any complaints received by the police department, and yeah.
Any other questions from the commission? This item is a public hearing item this evening, so at this time I will open up the public hearing. Anyone in the audience would like to speak on this item may do so at this time, coming to the podium, stating your name and address for the record.
My name's Nathan Johnson. I live at 17252 Anston Avenue, pretty close to that neighborhood there. And I know those houses have been there for only a year, so of course no neighbors are going to complain or file a complaint. I want to know, how long are these processes going to take to get to that corner? Because there's literally a house right on the edge of this property line here, and I'm sure there's going to be more houses built. What's going to be done after this mine is complete? Are they going to continue mining? Are there going to be businesses put in there? What's the plan for this? And how long is that going to take?
Okay. Just to confirm, you're looking at the southwest corner?
Southwest corner, yes.
Okay.
Yep. And are there, you know, are there going to be fences along there? Is it going to be bordered off? Because there are a ton of families there, a lot of young kids, me including myself. So just kind of some questions.
Okay. Thank you. Would you like to answer any of those questions, or are you able to answer any tonight?
Good evening, Chair. Members of the commission staff, my name's Scott Spiezak. I represent Fratelloni Companies from Little Canada, Minnesota. We have been operating, as Anthony pointed out, on this, if I can, this portion of the site since about 2019 or 2020. As he stated earlier, Flint Hills, the lease with the current operating group expires at the end of October, and we've executed a lease beginning November 1 with Flint Hills for the property. Our plans, as Anthony described, are to continue mining this western portion of this northern, northwestern portion of the site, and then also some in this area, but then shift and move in this direction to the southwest corner. I can't predict a year when that would be completed. It varies annually based on market conditions. Excuse me. Most of the material that we haul out of here goes to commercial industrial construction sites in the south metro area. We've recently hauled some up to the old Thompson Reuters property in Eagan that's being reconstructed. I would suggest a number of years, five to 10 years probably, depending on market conditions. As Mr. Nemchek stated, it's zoned ag but guided for light industrial. Flint Hills is the owner. It's up to them to decide what they do with that property at some point in the future. They do have conditions in the lease where if they had a buyer for that use, they could terminate our lease at some point without us having mining completed. Question about fencing. The slopes that we have on the mine are safe slopes, but given the residential neighborhood in the southwest corner, when we get in that area, we would probably erect some kind of a snow fence to delineate and keep people out of that area. That's all I have, unless you have other questions.
No, but I think that covered it all. You said erect like a snow fence, like a temporary fence?
Yeah, temporary fence, you know, four-foot-high fence to delineate the area. We also create earthen berm so that somebody can't drive over or drive off into the pit.
Okay. So some birmingham and some fencing?
Yeah, birmingham and fencing. Probably fence on top of the berm, just so that makes it more of a...
Deterrent?
Obstacle or barrier to have to navigate over.
Okay. Thank you. So I would, with those answers, you know, the best guess that he provided, five to 10 years. We do these mineral extraction renewals every two years, so this one will come up in front of us again in two years. And as they continue to make movement, I would assume we're going to see, obviously that development is starting there, and so I would think, I don't know if I'll still be on the commission when it comes backboard, but as they get to that corner, we would inquire also in the city. Would staff would also work with them to make sure that there's some sort of barrier. He mentioned a fence. We would make sure that's set up as they get to that section as well. And you can always reach out to the city if you've got other questions. And like I said, I just watch for this to come up again in two years, right around... We start doing them in this October. This one's early because of the transfer, but usually in the October, November, December timeframe, because they all, all the permits expire at the end of the year, every two years. Is there anyone else in the audience would like to speak on this item this evening? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Kinniger, seconded by Commissioner Rivera to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we have a motion to move forward on this.
I'll make a motion to recommend the City Council approve the renewal of a small-scale mineral extraction permit allowing Fratelloni Companies Incorporated to take over the mining operation from Vestera Stone X, subject to the terms and conditions in the attached 2026 conditions for mineral extraction.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Arnab. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. This item has been approved and will move forward to City Council on October 21st, tentatively, to City Council on October 21st. With that, we've got one more item on the Planning Commission public hearing docket this evening, and that is amendments to the zoning ordinance of the Rosemont City Code. Anthony, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. These are the formal recommendations by staff for changes to the zoning ordinance that were discussed by the Planning Commission at its August and June meetings. These are related to sections having to do with uses in non-residential districts, fencing standards, conditions for commercial event centers here in the city, and then outdoor dining areas and the regulation of those within the zoning code. And then lastly, some landscape change to one section of the landscaping, screening, and buffering standards. So the first amendment that I would like to present is related to non-residential district uses. The commission may recall this discussion basically initiated following an inquiry about the siting of a dance studio in the Biscayne Business Park. It was through that inquiry that it was noted that dance and music instruction falls under an educational service, which is not currently permitted. And initially, staff had assumed that it was because indoor commercial recreation facilities are allowed. The definitions of both of those uses are before you hear. Staff did a review of codes from Apple Valley, Plymouth, Maple Grove, Edina, and Woodbury, found that educational services, dance studios specifically, and also some educational services such as tutoring and things like that. So based on that review and the discussion that was had at that meeting, the minutes of which were attached to the packet, and the video from that meeting, which is available online, staff is recommending that simply adding educational services as a permitted use in the B2 employment district. There was some discussion about the two possible solutions, which would be changing the definition of commercial indoor recreation facility, or just simply adding educational services. And then, as I said, based on the conversation, the commission directed staff to just update the use table to include educational services as a permitted use. The second amendment to the code, 1163, this has to do with commercial event centers. Staff received an inquiry from someone who was wondering about two, specifically two of the standards. of the standards related to commercial event centers. The commission may recall that there are a number of conditions that are applied to this type of a use. The two specific standards had to do with the property owner and the venue operator being the same person, and that they have to live there, and also that the maximum number of guests is 200, although the code does allow a larger number to be approved based on the size of site, structures, parking availability, and other relevant factors. There was robust discussion amongst the planning commission with staff receiving the feedback to make the following recommendation, that the property owner and venue operator do not have to be the same individual or live on site. They simply just must be on premises for the duration of each event. And then that second one being the maximum number of guests. It seemed like if the code would allow for a larger number than 200, based on the size of the site, structures, parking availability, it would just make sense that the maximum number of guests shall be based on the size of the site, structures, parking availability, and other relevant factors.
Anthony, you want us to hold our questions to the very end, or no?
What's that?
Do you want us to hold our questions to the end, or?
I think, Madam Chair, how would you like to do it? Is it easier just to do them as we go?
I think it's easier to do them as we go.
Okay.
Personally.
So just the only question on this one is, we simplify it by saying the maximum number of guests shall be based on the size of the site, structures, et cetera. Is there, so where is that determined? Is there a table somewhere, a chart? Or how is that determined what the number would eventually be then?
So it would be the site plan that would come forward to get the approval for that use.
So the site plan would say maximum number of occupants?
Well, it would show the size of the building and how many people could fit in that building. And then if it's a building that can hold 400 people, then they need to provide parking for 400 people. If they're not able to do either of those, you know, that would be, the site would be the limiting factor, not kind of an arbitrary 200 that we came up with at some point.
Well, just like the childcare one we just reviewed, there is limitations and it'll be defined by the plan. Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Reed, too. You know, one other thing to think about as a part of that verbiage, is that there are other types of codes that would impact the number of occupants, like state fire code. So a fire marshal would make a determination based on a building capacity. So that's covered under this definition here, which wouldn't really fall under other places within our city code, but our other relevant factors as a part of this language here.
Makes sense.
Yep.
Other things that impact or constrain sites is setback requirements, landscaping requirements, things like that, lot coverage. So the site plan would really be the determinant there.
Would like the road, roadway and like neighborhood of like roads be a consideration in that too? Like if somebody's building like a very large event center with lots of traffic in a place that wouldn't, neighbors wouldn't want a lot of traffic, is that a consideration as an other relevant factor?
So the use itself was initially brought forth to allow property owners who had farmsteads and things like that to reuse those as event centers. So the assumption would be that those would be dirt roads. Now, if there are impacts to the roadways due to an extreme amount of traffic, the city would be getting involved with those things. These are typically located in rural areas that do have, there aren't a ton of neighbors around. They are also limited on where they can go in the city. They have to be east of, I think it's Blaine Avenue. So it's those rural ag-type areas where it's located.
And the parking requirements are going to be, are followed, like obviously Crystal's cuttlebugs, for example, was based on the daycare and the rooms and the students
Yep.
that are there, the children that are there. This is an event center, so it would be based on some, like
It has its own standard, yeah. Correct. And I can't remember if it's one stall per guest, or one stall per two guests, or something.
It was two or three.
Yeah, two or three.
Okay. Any other questions on this item? Okay.
And we can always come back to. The benefit being that we all kind of talked about this, you know, between the two meetings, some of these. Okay, this next one, 1168 accessory uses, is related to the outdoor dining areas. This had come up and we, the city clerk had actually recommended in the council approved an amendment to the city code as it relates to liquor licensing and what is required of a business to get a liquor license if it has an outdoor area. That language in that section of the code, which is in chapter three, says that the patio or deck area must be compact and contiguous to the licensed premises and shall be quarantined off by an appropriate fence, wall, or staff monitor as approved by the city. That change was made, I think the commission could recall, when Los Tortillas had their parking lot, a few stalls converted to a patio area. Well, the zoning code still required that when a liquor license is granted, an uninterrupted enclosure is required, and the enclosure shall only have access through the principal building. That's probably a good one for nightclubs or heavy drinking establishments, or places that we just don't really have in the city. And our liquor licenses, we don't have that many that would allow for that type of a business. So for consistency and clarity, and also flexibility for the restaurant owners, staff is recommending just bringing them into alignment and just saying that the patio area must be compact and contiguous, quarantined off by an appropriate fence, wall, or staff monitor as approved by city staff. Really, you know, keeping it on the restaurant owners to keep their patrons in line. They know the kind of business that they have. So again, this is something that the planning commission did discuss. This next section has to do with fencing standards. This was reviewed at the August meeting. The commission may recall that the maximum fence height is six feet inside in rear yards, but in the place where a side yard abuts the front yard of a home on a corner lot, that area, it's 48 inches. We reviewed codes from Lakeville, Minnetoka, Burnsville, Woodbury, Hastings. None of those cities regulate that area specifically. One community has a setback, although this depiction is a little deceiving because property lines don't go right to the curb of the street. There is about a 13-foot setback from a curb that is public right-of-way. The commission seemed inclined to remove that specific 48-inch standard and allow for six-foot fences around the entire side and rear yard of those corner lots. So the recommended amendment would be just striking C from that portion of the code. And lastly, screening, landscaping, screening, and buffering standards. There were, when this was originally discussed, there were two components that staff wanted the commission to talk about and provide feedback on. The first being parking lot landscaping. Right now, there is a certain amount of trees that must be planted within parking lot areas in the islands and peninsulas. That is in addition to the landscaping required as based on the site area. The staff's recommendation and the feedback from the commission was that those trees could count towards the area. The goal is to, if the goal is to have one tree per 3,000 square feet, it should just be one tree per 3,000 square feet. The code still requires a certain amount of trees of the required number to be placed within those parking lot areas to provide shading and prevent that heat island effect. But staff is only recommending that trees be allowed to be counted as part of that area requirement. Shrubs, flowers, and ground cover in those islands is still in addition to the minimum number of foundation plantings, which are based on the building perimeter. So trees are the only thing being impacted by this. The second component had to do with screening, the requirement for 90% opacity. Staff would like to bring that back in the future with some landscaping professionals or a landscape architect who can maybe help us talk through how best to quantify 90% opacity. What are some best practices? What are they seeing in the industry for that, so that we can still meet the goal of providing appropriate screening from certain uses like drive-through stacking areas? So just one change to this section of the code related to including the trees that are within the parking lot landscaping to count towards the total amount of trees on the site. So that being said, I kind of whipped through all of those. I do appreciate the commission taking the time to discuss these in advance, but if there's any further discussion, I'd love to have it.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone have any questions on these items?
I had one. If you can go back to the liquor one. So my understanding is, like, this got out of sync with the broader, I guess, code regarding restaurants, right? And so my question is, for the code itself, should it just mirror by referencing, the other code just says it needs to follow the same code?
I mean, it could, but it's also really handy to have it in the zoning code as well, as long as it says the same thing. Just because when we direct businesses and things like that, or businesses are looking, they
Right. It's just that the only thing is, then it could get out of sync again if there's a further change.
Yeah, which was what we do a lot of times with the state statutes, too. The change that occurred, so the city clerk changed that section, her section of the code, you know, to try to fix a problem. It's just that when the zoning code was updated, it wasn't reflected in theirs. I mean, the goal is, and it's not something that changes
Yeah.
very often. If it was something that was being updated, or some sort of quantifiable amount, or something, it might be helpful to reference, but I don't believe that it hurts to have it reiterated in both sections.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Bednar, the other thing to consider as a part of that too, that oftentimes in some of the regulatory sections of our code, especially under city clerk, where it regulates, you know, like liquor and that type of stuff, they're pulled directly from the state statute. So as a city, we always have, or we typically would have the ability to be more restrictive on some of that stuff. So this is kind of preserving our ability and right to maintain a little bit more autonomy than just saying that we will always be changing when the state changes something per a reference to another section in our code.
Makes sense.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anthony, can you go back to the tree one once? I just caught this as I was looking at it on there. Do we want to change, it says shrubs, flowers, and ground cover needed in addition to the minimum number of trees and foundation plantings required by this title?
Oh, you strike out trees?
Yeah.
So that it doesn't, that's a good catch.
No.
I think that would make sense.
Okay. I didn't catch it earlier. I apologize. So, okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. This item is a public hearing item, so at this time, we will open up the public hearing. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak may do so at this time, coming to the podium, stating your name and address for the record. Seeing no one in our audience, I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Kenninger, seconded by Commissioner Bednar. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, public hearing is now closed. A little crazy there.
Madam Chair, I do apologize that I did not put a slide with the recommended action, so you'll have to reference the actual staff report.
Got it. That's okay. We can handle that. Okay. So I will make a motion to recommend the city council approve zoning code amendments related to sections 11-4-2, 11-6-3, 11-6-8, 11-7-5, and 11-7-6, as described in the staff report dated September 23, 2025, with the one addition to section 11-7-6. In 5B, we will strike the second reference to trees as well. Minimum number of trees and foundation plantings will now read minimum number of foundation plantings required by this title.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Kenninger, seconded by Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. That concludes our public hearing section this evening. Is there any new business?
Madam Chair, I just would like to note that these text amendments will be going to the council on October 7, rather than October 21. Just because there is a full two weeks until that council meeting, the residents, businesses would appreciate some resolution on this, and there are no site plans or things, additional information that we're waiting for. So we'll be moving this one to the first meeting in October.
Thank you, Anthony. I did forget to note that. I appreciate that catch. Any new business?
None.
Okay. Any discussion items from the commission?
I think we were
Mr. Rivera?
I do have a couple. We were kind of looking back on some of the things that we have approved over the months or years, and just kind of wanting a status update, like for instance, at one point, the Holiday Station store was going to extend their canopy further towards County Road 42, but I've never seen that take place. Is that still in place, or?
Have you heard from them? I thought that happened. Did that not happen?
Steph will look into that and get back to you.
I thought it happened.
No, no, it's still the same size.
The one on 42?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The second item that we kind of looked at was kind of looking forward to the coffee/wine bar, I believe, in the Morrison parking lot, but we haven't seen any updates on that. Is that still taking place as well?
Yep. The developer, they're still working with the owner on the real estate transaction of that project. That's the last update that we have on that.
In the meantime, we have food trucks, so that's okay.
We do.
Thank you.
You don't want to ask what the others? The Willie McCoy's Copper Pint is dead, right?
They do not have an active application.
Okay. And then the other one was, that we talked about was the, kind of the Warren's Land, with he came in for approval of those two buildings.
Restaurant, drive-thru.
Restaurants, drive-thru taco.
Yeah, so I don't have a lot of updates. I can say that those parcels changed ownership, which is an important step, but that's all.
And so we could expect that ownership probably, is the old plan still, is the old approval still active if they wanted to build what was approved?
That was planned unit development, so the site plan, it could be built, they could come back and change it if they wanted to.
But they could just build with what was already approved?
Right.
Okay. Interesting. I didn't know if the ownership change would change that or not. Okay.
I have one more.
Yes.
Now that the corner has been cleaned off of the old gas station, I think there's a lot of chatter about maybe what's taking place there. Is that something that is going to be like open to the public suggestions, or how is that going to be determined and decided?
Yep, so we do have kind of a series of updates on the city's website noting different public input processes that have taken place so far. The plan at this point is to now start engaging the broker community to put a request for proposal out for potential developments, bring those back to the Port Authority, probably sometime in the new year for their consideration if they would like to proceed with any type of sale for development over there. So we did hear a lot of different opinions from different groups online at Leprechaun Days and some other ways. So stay tuned on that, but the next step is starting to now solicit requests from the developer community.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion items? Okay, I will review our next three meetings coming up. We've got October 28, and that one I'm a 50/50 on. I may have a work trip. Are you around, Commissioner Reed?
I believe so.
Okay. So I will, as soon as that firms up, I will let you know. It's either that week or the week before, it's looking like. And then November 25, which is the Tuesday prior to Thanksgiving, and then December 22, which is a Monday prior, the Monday prior to the Christmas holiday. So if you're going to be absent for any of those, please let Julia and Anthony know. And that is it. Anything else? Okay. Seeing nothing else, meeting adjourned.